Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this Perth County Council meeting for Thursday, July the 3rd. I'm Warden Doug Callum, and I'll officially call this meeting to order. As a clerk, the note to starting time is 9:00 a.m. We do have regrets today from Councillor Egits and Councillor Smith, and I see that Councillor Duncan is joining us via Zoom. Morning, Matt. At this time, I'd like to bow your heads for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Yanischnabi. We have longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse, indigenous, Meti, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. At this time, does anyone wish to disclose any pecuniary interest? Deputy Warden Trintowski?
Yes, good morning, Warden Callum. Yes, I would like to declare a conflict of interest with the J. Item 8.1.2 and subsequently, item 15.1. Reason for the disclosure, I serve as Chair of the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Hearings Committee, and the Rose application involves details that include the authority which may be put before the Hearings Committee at a future date.
Thank you, that is noted. Anyone else wish to declare? If any arises throughout the meeting, please do so at that time. Are there any additions or amendments for today's agenda? Seeing none, I have a motion that reads that the July 3, 2025 Agenda be approved. Moved by Councillor Orr, seconded by Councillor Mackenzie. All those in favor? And that is carried. Council, we do have 16 items on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to extract, discuss any of the items? Seeing none, I have a motion that reads that council receives the Consent Agenda Items 6.1 to 6.16 and approves the June 19, 2025 minutes. Moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on our agenda, Item 7, we do have a public meeting. At this time, I have a motion to recess the regular council meeting, that the regular council recessed for the purpose of holding the planning public meeting at approximately 9:03 a.m. Moved by Councillor Wilhelm, seconded by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, I'll officially like to call this planning meeting to order at 9:03 a.m. Anyone have any pure interest to the close? Seeing none. Confirmation of the agenda. Motion reads as follows. That the planning public meeting, July 3, 2025 Agenda be approved. Moved by Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. We do have the planning minutes from January 9. And the resolution reads that council approves the minutes for the January 9, 2025 public meeting. Moved by Councillor Orr, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on, I'd ask planning staff to provide the report. Morning and welcome.
Thank you. Zelenki Pramil, Pramil, on behalf of Ron and Brenda Hyde, have submitted an official plan amendment for the lands municipally known as 2188, 2190, and 2192 William Shakespeare Street. Lands are subject to provisional consent, which was approved in November of 2024, which is intended to result in three parcels of land with ameasement for existing sanitary service. The OPA and zone change, which are now being applied for, are required to facilitate the intended residential development. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing to re-designate the serviced urban area commercial to a serviced urban area residential designation. The proposed development is consistent with the policies of the provincial planning statement as development is considered to be an efficient use of the land, resources, and infrastructure, and it provides for a range of housing types within Shakespeare. Development of the subject lands contributes to a mix of land uses on a property that is separated from commercial activity, which is located on the higher order roads in Shakespeare. Development would contribute to meeting the needs of the current and future residents in the area on land set will be serviced. General intent of the official plan supports proposed development as it provides for a compact form of development that is non-farm related. The proposed redesignation allows for development of single detached dwellings in a serviced urban area that is connected to existing municipal services and will provide for an infill development on vacant parcels of land. Lot sizes we consider to be compatible with the character of the surrounding residential area and the residential properties to the east and to the south of the subject lands. The rezoning proposes to rezon the lands to a residential medium density R2-15 zone, which allows for a reduced minimum interior side yard setback of 1.2 meters, which allows for more compact development. Next slide, please. The applicant has submitted an archaeological assessment in support of the application. That assessment noted that no further archaeological assessment of the property is required. A noise feasibility study was also completed for the proposed development. The recommendation of the noise study is that noise warning clauses should be included in ingredients of purchase and sale that informs the future owners and occupants of the proximity to the existing commercial and the retail units. The report also noted that any building construction would meet the minimum requirements of Ontario Building Code, which provides for sufficient acoustical insulation for the proposed buildings. The noise warning clauses are typically controlled through conditions in subdivision agreement. So planning staff are suggesting that the applicant is required to provide a solicitor's undertaking that a noise warning clause would be included in the property intensity agreements and offers of purchase and sale for the dwelling units in accordance with the recommendations of that study prior to the zoning by law being passed by township of Perth East Council. The applicant has also submitted documentation of the registration of a record of site condition for the subject lands. That record of site condition includes a certification from the qualified author that states that there is no evidence of contaminants in soil, groundwater, or sediment found under the subject lands that would interfere with the development of these properties for residential problems. No comments or concerns have been received from the public or public agencies. The township of Perth East Council, at a meeting on June 17, resolved to provide a recommendation to Perth County Council that the Official Plan Amendment 234 affecting the lands as described be approved. The planning staff have no concerns with the official plan or the zone change amendments. The proposed amendments allow for residential development on an infill property with municipal services. Our opinion is consistent with the provincial planning statement, conforms to the County of Perth Official Plan, and represents good planning and available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your report, Jeff. Council, do you have any initial questions for staff? Seeing none, does the applicant or agent wish to provide any comments or submissions regarding the application? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning.
Morning, Laura.
Yes, as noted, my name is Laura Jameson. I am a planner with Zelenki Pramil, the authorized agent on behalf of Ron and Brenda Hyde for this official plan and zoning by law amendment combined application. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. That really was a detailed overview of our request essentially to develop these lands for three single detached dwellings. As Jeff stated, the application is in line with the provincial planning statement, Perth County Official Plan, and we have the support of the local township council as well. If there are any additional questions, I would be happy to answer those. And as noted by Jeff, if county council does request a letter of undertaking from the client's lawyer, we would be happy to provide that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Laura. Are there any members of the public in attendance that wish to provide any comments or input in support of this planning application? And if so, please come forward to the delegation table and state your name and address for the meeting record. Seeing none, are there any members of the public in attendance that wish to provide any comments or input in opposition of this planning application? And if so, please come forward to the delegation table and state your name and address for the meeting record. Seeing none, are there any other persons in attendance that wish to speak to this application? Seeing none, there's no other business, no announcements. So I have a motion that reads as follows. That the planning public meeting be adjourned at approximately 9:11 a.m. Moved by Councillor Kaisenberg, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. I now have a motion that regular council reconvene at approximately 9:11 a.m. Moved by Councillor Duncan, seconded by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on to 8.1, under Planning Services, Official Plan Amendment 234. Hi. Coming up is Jeff.
Jeff.
Jeff, you're up.
So I don't have anything further to add from the previous presentation, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you once again. Any questions from council? Councillor Orr?
Just wanted to make clerical error, or a spot of clerical error. It says municipality of North Perth on the photos, so we could get that switched.
What happened?
Let's make that change.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I have a motion that council receives the Official Plan Amendment 234 Hyde Report, and that council approves Official Plan Amendment Number 234 to the County of Perth Official Plan submitted by Zelenki Pramil Limited on behalf of Ron and Brenda Hyde affecting lands legally described as lots 21 and 22, Plan 331, 2188, 2190, and 2192 William Shakespeare Street, Southeast Hope Ward in the township of Perth East. And moved by Councillor Orr, seconded by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thanks again, Jeff. Moving on to 8.12, Application for Draft Plan of Vacant Land Condominium. Please note that Deputy Warden Trintowski has declared conflict of interest. And we welcome John Vice. Morning, John.
Thank you, Warden and members of council. So before you here is a application for a draft plan of condominium extension, file number WP19-02. You can see the location at the red star. It's 230th Ontario Road in Mitchell. Next slide, please. So the draft plan of vacant condominium encompasses about seven buildings with a total of 28 townhouse dwelling units, as well as common element blocks as well. Development is located towards the northern portion of the property and does not encroach into the floodplain or hazard areas associated with Royal Creek itself. Next slide, please. So I want to give a little bit of an overview on timelines that has happened since the draft approved plan. So in May 16, 2019, Perth County Council granted the application draft plan approval. The draft approved plan approval was for five years. And if the conditions of draft plan were not fulfilled at that time, draft plan lapses. If the draft plan lapses, the proponents essentially will have to resubmit a new draft plan condominium. March 15, 2024, the applicants submitted their first extension request, and this was to ask for a one-year extension. On May 8, 2024, the manager of planning approved a three-month extension for the subject application as the lapsing date of May 16, 2024 would not have been met due to some council shuffling of dates. July 2, 2024, West Perth Council passed a resolution recommending the one-year extension be granted by county council. And then on July 4, 2024, county council granted that one-year extension. The new lapsing date now is July 4, 2025, which is tomorrow. May 1, 2025, applicants applied for their second one-year extension. If approved, the new lapsing date would be, they requested July 6, 2026. This will give them essentially over seven years to fulfill their conditions of draft plan. Next slide, please. So work continuing after the first one-year extension includes the municipality completed their addressing plan. Earth Power and West Perth easements were registered. They're ready to be submitted once final clearance package is ready. And then finally, one small item to note is curbs were installed as per site plan. Next slide, please. And with these extension requests, we often ask for factors that have impacted their ability to adequately register on time. Some of these factors included the following essentially. There's been a delay working with Earth Power on pad mount transformers, they've said. The reason for this delay, as the applicants have determined, was issues the developer has run into receiving funds for the transformer. And secondly, there's a delay working with the engineering consultants, the applicant's engineering consultants, to provide a professional engineer's written detailed estimate of 100% of the cost for the remaining common element items and services that will not be completed prior to condo registration. Next slide, please. So this slide just shows, this is from July 2, 2024, the property. You can see there's been, you know, some grading occur, and there's been some sorry, the the walls at the back as well, sorry. Next slide, please. And then you can see, fast forward to June 12, 2024, those curbs are installed. You can see that not a lot has occurred on site. Next slide, please. West Perth passed a resolution recommending a extension of this condo, draft plan condo, but only till December 23, 2025, and not the full one-year extension request as they've asked for. This coincides with staff's recommendation. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation, based on the age of the original approval, the limited work being completed on the site, and the request being the second of its nature to extend for one additional year, the full one-year isn't warranted. Staff are of the opinion that an extension until December 23, the end of the fiscal year, would be more in keeping. And planning staff therefore recommend the extension be approved only till December 23, 2025. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your report, John. Any questions for him at this time? Councillor McDermott?
I didn't get to see, but is that going into Mitchell on the left-hand side? Almost kind of across from Kim Parton's roughly, through the warden, yes. Second.
Councillor Orr?
Do they have the ability to get it wrapped up in six months, or what do you mean?
Through the warden, I believe there's, six months is plenty of time to wrap that up.
Nobody else is stopping it, like Upper Thames or delaying?
Warden, the Upper Thames River Conservation Company has provided some requirements a couple of months ago that weren't addressed at the site plan stage, but the Upper Thames requirements come into play prior to the issuance of building permits and aren't impacted by the clearing of these conditions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I have a motion that reads as follows. That council receives the application for draft plan of vacant land condominium extension, WP19-02, and KND Rose Construction Limited report. And that council approves the extension draft plan of vacant land condominium, WP19-02, to December 23, 2025 for lands legally described as part of Park Lot 81 and 82, registered plan number 341, Mitchell Parts 1 and 2, 44R-6043 in the municipality of West Perth. Moved by Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, John. Please invite Deputy Warden back in. Thank you. Moving on our agenda, 8.2.1, the May 2025 Forestry Inspector's Report. Tyler?
Perfect. So through the warden, thank you. Before council is the May 2025 Forestry Inspector's Report, prepared by Marvin Smith, the Forestry Inspector for Perth County. In the month of May, Marvin completed the seven inspections in response to the submission of the NOI, and one inspection in late April in response to the request from a landowner. All the information is in the report. If there's any questions, concerns, inquiries, I'd be happy to pass those along to Marvin.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Tyler? Seeing none, motion that council receives the May 2025 Forestry Inspector's Report for information, moved by Councillor Kaisenberg, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to 8.2.2, the 2024 Draft Consolidated Financial Statements. Welcome, Corey.
Morning, Warden Callum, council. Before you today is the 2024 Draft Consolidated Financial Statements. Again, based on the municipal act, it requires municipalities to comply with general accepting accounting principles and recommend by the public sector accounting board, or PSAP. The consolidated statements attached reflect the assets, liabilities, and net disposition, revenues, expenses of Perth County, as well as county's proportion share in municipal organizations such as the Huron Public Health and Spruce Lodge. As of December 31, 2024, the accumulated surplus or net disposition of the county, including the shared municipal organizations, amounted to about just under $117,500,000. The presentation also includes a remeasurement gain, loss of our financial investments, and it shows a net gain from 2024 of $117,500,000, which was different from the previous year, which actually showed a loss of about $209,000. The county in 2024 generated $61 million in revenue, of which 22.6 million came from the county taxpayers, 23 million from the provincial government, and about $8 million coming from other municipalities. And $60.9 million was the expenses for 2024, which has identified a small surplus of $100,000. Based on the PSAP budget, Perth County budgeted a $1.8 million surplus. Due to the significant drain work performed in 2024, as well as escalating WRSB costs, the accumulated surplus has only gone up the minimal of $126,000. Perth County did see a healthy increase in investments in tangible capital assets of $9 million, but at the cost of our reserve balances, long-term debt in 2024. If there's any other questions on the financial statements, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for the report. Colleagues, questions or comments? Councillor Wilhelm?
Yes, could you confirm with me, Corey, that our GICs lost over $200,000 in '24?
So in 2024, there are investments have an unrealized gain of $770,000. The '23 had an unrealized loss of $210,000.
Just looking here on investments, it shows the 2023 at $1.2 million, and in '24, it shows investment of $1 million.
So that is, so those GICs are proportionate with the GICs from our outside boards, so through the health unit as well as Spruce Lodge. So I don't know the particulars of those GICs, but I can get the particulars to those to you.
You okay with that? Yeah, okay. Councillor McDermott?
Yeah, just on page 142, the Stafford Purse Museum, do we own 50% of that?
Yeah, so Stratford Purse Museum is funded through us, as well as the city of Stratford proportionately. I believe it's a 60-40 split between Perth County funding 60%, 40% being funded from the city of Stratford.
Okay, no, I was just wondering how much they still had as a debt. So just, I figured that 50-50, and if you take the numbers there and multiply times 12 or something, you get about 2.6 mil. So they, so if we have 60%, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be 6 mil, it would still open. Okay, cool.
Good. Any other questions or comments? You're good, Matt? Seeing none, motion that reads as follows. That council receives the 2024 Draft Consolidated Financial Statement Report, and that council approves the consolidated financial statement for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2024, as audited by the firm Graham Scott &amp; S.L.L.P. Moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thanks again, Corey. You're up again, Development Charges Feasibility Study.
Thank you through you, Warden Callum and council. This report, Perth County is looking for assistance to see about development charges may look like in Perth County. Finance received calls from qualified vendors to assist in completing the project. Hemson Consulting in providing the most feasible costs. This feasibility study would add a resource to finance and assisting the county to navigate legislative changes coming down the pipe from the province. This will include in education fees for council, development charges later in the year to speak not just those legislative changes, but just what development charges may look like in Perth County. It is an avenue for counties to look at all revenue tools available to them to assist with increased levies. Again, growth paying for growth. If there's any specific questions to the report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions or comments for Corey? Councillor Mackenzie?
Just curious, I would have a nice to add in the report maybe, surrounding colonies. How many of our neighboring colonies have development charges?
So the upper tier, I believe Oxford and Wellington both have development charges. And with our lower tiers, there's three out of four of our lower tiers have development charges as well.
Thank you. Councillor Wilhelm?
I guess I'm not in favor of this, spending $28,000. And the reason is that, as Corey indicated, most of the lower tiers already have development charges. And the reference was, for example, an AMAS base in North Perth. I don't believe we're going to get development charges from our two partners. And I see no benefit of spending $28,000 when we already have development charges with the lower tiers.
Thank you. Councillor McDermott?
Would the development charges be mostly towards roads? Like that's what we're mostly responsible for, so.
Through you, Warden. The infrastructure related to increase with growth, our area would be, whether it's service-related growth, capital capacity, such as what was indicated with paramedic base. But yes, roads, bridges may be the area that the consultant would see as being the impact factor on the DCs in Shetter Town.
This would be fairly different. This would be fairly different, though, than the lower tiers, because we can do libraries and everything else. So this is an entirely different animal.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Orr?
Is the province not saying to delay development charges? Should we not delay this for one year? I'm pretty opposed to it, but I mean, we don't have to spend $28,000 this year. Let's see what the province plays out.
Through you, Warden. I think regardless of the legislative changes, this feasibility study is, will take in consideration that, but it looks like we should still kind of look at that avenue related to development charges. But if it's council's purview to delay, then we could delay this project into and put it into work plan for 2026. And then allow the province to deal with the legislative changes that might come down with, with the new Ontario regulations that might be provided.
Thank you. CAO, would you like to weigh in?
Certainly through the warden, it would, it would be certainly welcome if council wanted to do a referral motion back to staff to put this into the 2026 work plan and upon completion of the province's review, so we know exactly what we're dealing with, if that's something that you wanted to do. We have had that staff discussion, so.
Okay. Council's wish? Councillor Orr?
I'll make a motion to send it back to staff and do exactly what Laurie stated there. Wait to see what the province does and delay it for a year to 2026.
Okay. I believe Tyler has a resolution he can read.
So through the warden, just kind of lumping everything together, the council receives the development charges feasibility study project report, and that council refers the development charges feasibility study project to staff to 2026 work plan.
You okay with that? So move by Councillor Orr, second by? Councillor Kasonberg? Call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Corey. Moving on our, moving on our agenda, we'll move to paramedic services, mental health strategy, public safety personnel report, and I believe Debbie? Morning, welcome Debbie.
Good morning. Through the warden, I'm here today on behalf of Chief Adair to share a good news story. I shared in the report before you, the solicitor general has made available funding to public safety personnel for additional mental health supports, and Perth County has submitted an application. We are here seeking your approval to spend the money that we may be awarded. We will keep the group updated as that information comes in. Is that simple? There's any questions?
Simple, simple. Any questions for Debbie? I see none. So, motion that reads as follows. The council receives the mental health strategy for public safety personnel MHS 4PSP Solicitor General Grant Report, and that, should Perth County Paramedic Services be successful in receiving funding through the MHS 4PSP grant program, council directs staff to proceed with utilizing the funds to support the enhancement of the PCPS mental health strategy. Move by, Councillor Duncan? Second by, Deputy Warden Trentowski? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Debbie. Moving on to 8.4, Public Works. Living snow fence. Welcome, Bill and John.
Thank you, Warden Callum. Through you, good morning, council. This information report from Public Works is with respect to the Perth County stewardship program, and particularly the living snow fence stream of the program. At the June 3 meeting, council approved the addition of the living snow fence stream under the Perth County stewardship program, and also directed staff to provide a report on, to council on the program criteria relating to the living snow fence stream. Under the stewardship program, all applications are assessed through framework that considers ecological impact as well as the feasibility of a project and social and community benefits. The use of this evaluation framework ensures that alignment of the project with the overall program objectives. As the program itself continues to evolve, the evaluation criteria has been reviewed and streamlined together only essential information needed to assess a project's alignment with project goals. This ensures that the application process is straightforward, efficient, and respectful of applicant's time. Program criteria is listed under table 1 attached to the report. This evaluation criteria has been applied successfully over the past two intake periods for the stewardship program, and has undergone adaptive management based on participant feedback and measurable program outcomes. With the addition of the living snow fence stream, there have been no changes to the program criteria, other than the addition of one criteria on which reflects a project's location in relation to road sections, which are at higher risk and more prone to drifting conditions. Projects adjacent to these areas are awarded additional point during evaluation. This reflects the increased value in establishing snow fence plantings in locations where they can deliver the greatest public safety and operational benefit. Other than that, the criteria for living snow fence projects shares much the same criteria as projects submitted under the landowner stream, as noted in table 1. Those criteria used to assess living snow fence projects are noted on the right-hand column of this, of the table. There are 13 criteria altogether, 12 of them which are pre-existing and are shared with the landowner stream or apply to all program streams. Also attached to the report is the updated landowner agreement that is used for all program streams. This agreement reflects the existing agreement used under the stewardship program, revised to include conditions relating to the living snow fence stream, and to incorporate standard terms to promote the success of the project while protecting the interests of both parties. The agreement is consistent with those used for other conservation authority-led tree grant programs and other stewardship grant providers, such as Huron Clean Water Program and other provincial and government-funded programs. The agreement stipulates a 15-year protection commitment, which is a typical term for planting agreements. However, the agreement also acknowledges that it is not transferable in the event that property ownership changes. This is also a typical condition amongst these type of agreements, which are not intended to be overly restrictive. That provides a summary of the report, and we would be happy to address any questions of council. Just a note that the fall intake period for the stewardship program is currently open, and applications through that program will be received till the middle of September. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Questions or comments for Bill at this time? Seeing none, have a motion that reads as follows. The council receives a Perth County stewardship program living snow fence stream criteria report for information. Move by, Councillor Kasonberg, second by, Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thanks, Bill. Moving on to 8.4.2, intersection review Perth Line 88 and Perth Road 178. John?
Thank you, Warden Callum, good morning, council. This report is to summarize and make recommendations for a comprehensive intersection study that was completed for Perth Line 88 and Perth Road 178, better known as Main Corners, which is a boundary intersection with Huron and Perth County. The two municipalities retained Darcy Spencer Associates to examine existing conditions, identify observed safety constraints, and to offer potential geometric and traffic control improvements that may mitigate adverse impacts to intersection safety. Currently, the intersection is stop-controlled on Perth Road 178, with Perth Line 88 being the through road. There is a horizontal curve on Perth Line 88 southeast of the intersection that does not require a warning speed reduction, meaning that is designed to be safely navigated at the posted speed limit of 80 kilometers per hour, and a picture of that intersection is within the report. There have been previous studies of the intersection, the last being conducted in 2020 by Huron County. That study notes that the intersection did not meet the always-stop warrant, and that all signage is above the requirements and standards set of the Ontario traffic manual. There are a number of supplemental safety devices either near the intersection, which are consistent with measured approaches taken by both municipalities. It is noted in the 2020 study and this study as well, that more than half the collisions that occur at this intersection relate to disobeying traffic control or failing to yield the right of way. The study conducted by R.C. Spencer indicated that all signage and safety devices are above standards and meet guidelines. It is also confirmed that the intersection does not meet the always-stop warrant based on volumes and collisions. Further, a traffic signal warrant was also conducted for the intersection and indicated that no warrants or justification were met for signalization. In Ontario, current best practices suggest that rounded about controls should not be considered or implemented if traffic signalization warrants are not met. The consultant did review the visibility warrant under the Transportation Association of Canada guidelines with respect to the horizontal curve to the southeast. This analysis indicated that there is insufficient sight distance to meet the recommended combination truck left turn from a stop intersection sight distance threshold. It is the consultant's opinion that implementing an always-stop at the intersection could mitigate the sightline limitations. There was another consideration to mitigate these limitations or distance threshold by lowering the speed limit through the horizontal curve and approach to the intersection. That was discussed at length with both the consultant engineer and staff from Perth and Huron County Public Works Departments. It is the recommendation of all parties that the implementation of an always-stop at the intersection is the most suitable solution. As well, there was an illumination review done and indicated that delineation lighting or dusk dawn lighting was warranted at this intersection. This should be able to be implemented using the existing hydro poles that are currently in place and provide support for the overhead flashing beacon at this location. If approved by both Huron and Perth County, installation of the always-stop and delineation lighting will proceed as soon as possible. All costs related to the installation will be split 50-50. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Questions or comments for John? Councillor McDermott?
John, are mostly accidents caused by people not stopping at the stop sign? Like, is that your main problem?
Through the warden, that's correct. Both, both studies have found that over half the collisions that do occur at the intersection are related to people either disobeying the stop sign, blowing through the stop sign, or failing to yield the right of way, meaning stopping but then proceeding out into the intersection when they should come.
Anyone else? Just a question, so where would the warning signs be leading up to it? Like, how far back, John? Or will there be any?
Through you, Warden. Sort of maybe clarify the warning signs.
So now that we're there, going to put up new stop signs, will it be warning signs, like new stop, like?
It's through you, Warden. We would treat this like, just like all our other always-stop installations. So all legs of the intersection will have a stop ahead sign and an oversized stop sign as well. There will be flashing illumination there. We will be keeping the overhead flashing beacon that will be red in all four directions instead of red and yellow. As well, for the initial period of a few months, we install new signage. It's kind of a sunburst signage over the stop ahead, just highlighting that this is a new location. And as well, we, we always use our digital messaging boards out there to, we would place them out there once installed, just to ensure that drivers are aware of the new always-stop.
Thank you. This is great news. It's been on North Perth's radar, as Mayor Todd and Councillor Duncan knows, but people just need to stop if approved. They just need to stop. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motion that reads as follows. The council receives the intersection review Perth Line 88 and Perth Road 178 report, and that council designate the intersection of Perth Line 88 and Perth Road 178 as an always-stop by amending Schedule A of Bylaw 2956 Designating Through Highways. Move by, Councillor Kasonberg, and second by Councillor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on, we have the ward's activity report. Anyone have any questions or comments where I was? It was a very busy June. Seeing none, a motion that reads, that council receives the ward's activity report, June 2025 report for information. Move by, Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Wilhelm. All those in favor? And that is carried. We're now into bylaws. First bylaw reads as follows. That bylaw 4038-2025, you're read a first, second, and third time and finally passed this third day of July 2025. Move by, Councillor Orr, second by, Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Next bylaw? That bylaw, number 4039-2025, be read a first, second, and third time, finally passed this third day of July 2025. Move by, Councillor Kasonberg, second by Councillor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. Does any council wish to give any notice of motion at this time? Seeing none, any other business? Any announcements that would benefit Perth County that you'd like to? Councillor Kasonberg?
Thank you, Warden Callum. Well, it's my pleasure to invite all to the 150th anniversary of Listowel's founding, the first weekend of August of this year. It's coming up quickly. We have a very dynamic program for that weekend, and so anyone who wishes to come, whether as observers or as those who have deep roots in Listowel and in North Perth, are welcome to attend, including the Hayloft Music Festival, which is our first run of this festival in the town of Listowel. And so we look forward to seeing as many of you as are interested and willing to come. It's going to be a wonderful time.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. And to add, the, just heard in the ranch this morning that with regards to the Hayloft, they are 50% sold out. So if they were wondering or wanting 8,000 people, that's a lot of people so far. So that's good. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Deputy Warden Trentowski?
Thanks, Warden Callum, through you. Just a reminder to fellow council colleagues and staff, the Summer Company launch event is being held today at 2 o'clock, located at the Bertrand Win on 245 Downey Street. Summer Company is a collaborative effort between Perth County Economic Development and our associates with the city of Stratford. It's the launch event for the summer students, summer jobs campaign, so everyone's invited to attend that event.
Good. I will be there bringing greetings on behalf of the county. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we do not have a closed session. We do have a confirmatory bylaw. That, Warden will step out. Please note in the minutes that it's happened. Motion reads, that bylaw 4040-2025 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting held July 3, 2025, is read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed July 3, 2025. Move by, Councillor Mackenzie, second by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Finally, the council meeting be adjourned at approximately 9:49 a.m. Move by, Councillor Wilhelm, and second by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your day.